The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the full and liberty and justice for all.
All right, the roll call show three board members are absent tonight. Eric Stramberg, Melissa Lynch, and Donovan Hill. We also don't have our students. And I'm assuming there's no citizen comments back there. So then we'll go to board member committee reports. And we'll start with Eric.
Uh, finance.
Okay, all right, Chad?
Nothing for me.
Sue's not good enough. Um, all I had was agenda planning and then finance also, so before this board meeting. Um, I don't have students, council here, so no report from them. Ben, superintendent, you're sorry.
It was great to see everybody. Uh, it is quiet as it should be in July, right? Um, if it's not quiet in July, then it's not a great summer. So I think that we're just enjoying the fact that it's quiet and people are, you know, out and about and trying to get people to use vacation days and kind of clear their heads and get ready for the whirlwind that will be coming up this August. But I'm just finishing up evaluations with different principals and getting those write-ups up and getting those to them. Uh, I have been out, uh, meeting with individuals from our task force that we had our first meeting last spring. Uh, I think I've had about seven or eight of those so far and just trying to pick their brain and kind of listen more than I talk as it relates to the future of operations as well as facilities in our district, trying to prep them, their, them for ongoing meetings that will start in the fall. And we'll probably have one to two a month for several months to prepare that group to give the board a recommendation for a possible future referendum. Could be potentially a bond or an operating referendum or a tech levy or a combination of all of those things. So we're doing those individual meetings as well. Uh, as you can see, as you're driving around the district, there's lots of different, uh, projects happening and that will be reflected, I think, when Michelle will talk a little bit about the long-term facility maintenance budget and kind of the plan. Um, so you'll be, you can see lots of that work happening. Of course, we're, uh, updated regularly on the roundabout construction in the city that's happening on the one end of town that, uh, impacts all of our summer programming. Our staff has done a great job of keeping up and modifying and adjusting on a daily basis. Uh, as we have lots and lots of summer programming happening, we just started our Tiger Academy this last week and that's with our more academic summer school programming as well as, you know, any number of other programs that are happening this summer. So we're just enjoying the, um, the pace being a little bit lower, but we're gearing ourselves up for once we get, uh, probably in two weeks from now, it's full steam ahead. So with that, I'll end my commentary unless you have further questions.
Anybody have questions for Ben? We'll move on then to approve our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Uh, motion's been, uh, made by Eric Manks, seconded by Chad. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Agenda is approved. Item number seven, discuss and act on previous board meeting minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those minutes as presented? So, uh, motions made by Sue, seconded by Chad. Uh, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, minutes are approved. Consent agenda. Um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion's been made by Chad, seconded by Eric. Um, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, the consent agenda is approved. And we will go to our first information item. Uh, Rome River Special Ed Co-op update.
Hi, let's bring Rome River up and we'll let you introduce yourself to everybody and thank you for coming.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am Tanya Tecker, I'm your Executive Director of Special Ed for Rome River. And this is?
I'm Tracy Wells, I'm the Finance and HR Director for Rome River.
Thank you for letting us or allowing us to come and speak with you tonight on behalf of Rome River. We have a couple of agenda items that we will be discussing with you this evening. Thank you, and then we just start ending this slide?
Uh, you just click the button to the right.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so these are some of the agenda items that we're going to briefly cover today while we're here, um, discussing our Rome River North program. So Rome River is an agency made up of six member districts, Princeton being, um, one of them and the largest one in our cooperative as well. We are joined together to provide specialized instruction and services to students, um, ages, well, birth through twenty-two who have disabilities. Um, we started, Rome River started in this early seventies by providing itinerant services to, um, member districts. And then, um, we started our setting for education sites, which opened in nineteen eighty-seven. Some of the services that we provide are outlined there on the slide. I'm not going to read those for you, but we have a wide range of itinerant services that we provide to each member district, along with our free setting for, um, sites as well. We also provide resources, staff development to school districts, um, to parents and guardians, technical assistance and supports with due process paperwork, which requires, is required by the law and the Minnesota Department of Education. So as I mentioned, we have three federal setting for education sites. And a setting for education site is simply educating students with disabilities in off-campus of their home district. So at another public facility, at least fifty percent of their day or longer. It is not a residential setting at all, um, but we do provide very intensive specialized, special ed services to these students that have emotional, uh, behavioral and communication disabilities as well. This again is not residential, like I mentioned. Um, however, the staff that we have, they're very specialized, have a lot of training. And, um, it's typically the last, um, public entity before a student would maybe go to residential if needed. So we have really difficult, um, um, students that we, that have difficult behaviors and, um, different social, emotional and, um, communication disorders there. So we have three education sites, like I mentioned. Rome River North is located in Malaca. We had moved into that, uh, current location in nineteen ninety-two. That serves students in grades K through nine. Uh, we now have that access to the whole building. You sent a picture on the, on the front of our presentation. At one point, we just had the old grocery store part of it and then Malaca built their own ALC. So we took over the whole entire building. Um, that was a couple of years ago. I don't remember the exact date on that. We have Rome River South, which is located in Cambridge. That building opened in two thousand and three and that serves students grades K through ninth. And then Rome River East is also located in Cambridge. That was open in two thousand and thirteen. And that also, that serves our students in grades ten through twelve, the high school setting. So we're looking at, um, what we can do with Rome River North. Um, we've had this discussion for year after year after year, many, many years. Um, since its inception, we've talked about how can we improve Rome River North? Um, and so we're exploring different options, building options for Rome River North site, which again is in Malaca. The reasons for this exploration is it is the only federal setting for site within our cooperative that does not have a special locking system. So this locking system that we have installed at Rome River East and Rome River South allows, uh, allows so that, um, students are unable to run out of the building and elope and run into traffic when they're dysregulated or so they, um, can't let other people in either. So it's a locking system where you have to have badges and you can buzz in, in between, um, different rooms and those types of, um, situations. It also has a fire system, um, that is, uh, sensitive to students who might have autism who, who might become dysregulated with loud noises. And so it's a, it's a whole system throughout the building that is, um, not your typical loud noise, you know, and flashing lights. And so it is, um, unfortunately, Rome River North is the only site that does not have that special locking system. And as you know, Rome River North is right by Malaca High School on twenty-three. And so it takes a lot of, um, staff power to be able to address elopement issues when a student does elope and, and runs out of the building. Um, we have looked into putting the special locking system into Rome River North, but it was, um, very expensive for that facility. Um, and we felt that the, the facility itself was not, um, conducive to be able to have that, um, system put in. The current building layout is really not conducive to special ed, um, setting for students. It's difficult to respond in a timely manner because you have to unlock, I think it's five or six doors to get from one end of the building to the other end of the building. If there's a crisis, it takes a long time to go through each section. We keep the doors locked just to keep the students and staff and, and other, um, individuals safe that are in, visiting our sites. Uh, we do not have space for recreation activity. The parking lot is paved. Uh, we are, we are lucky that Malaca allows us to use their, um, playground for sometimes during the day, depends on if there's other students out there. And so every now and then our students get to go over to the Malaca playground and use that. Otherwise, we don't have recreational space for our students. There is a potential to serve more students, whether they're members or non-member district or students, um, if we would build a new building. The current overall appearance of our facility is not appealing to parents and guardians. We've done many tours and, um, some of the parents are like, thanks, but no thanks. It's, it's not, we've done what we can by painting and, and replacing some carpet and stuff, but it used to be an old grocery store, so it's, it's very cookie cutter, a lot of doors and, you know, um, walls and that kind of stuff. So it's not appealing at all. It does not look like, um, a, a school like our other facilities do. Um, we, like I mentioned, we've talked about replacing Rome River North for many years. Well, why now? Why are we looking at building now instead of leasing? Right now, we lease all of our sites. Um, it's because new legislation passed last year. That makes this more of affordable cost for cooperatives to be able to, um, look at building their own buildings and owning those buildings as well. We have been working with Nexus Solutions. Um, Tracy and I and, um, Janine Miller, who is our current admin coordinator for Rome River North, have toured multiple setting for sites. Because you don't know what you don't have until you go and, and see all the bells and whistles and, and see all the wonderful things that you could do. Um, as I mentioned, Rome River North serves currently K through ninth grade students. This building concept would move it from K through ninth grade to K through twenty-two plus or K through twelfth grade. Um, we would be able to serve more students, members and non-members, uh, students as well, like I mentioned. And we kind of came up with this building concept. Obviously, nothing was set in stone, um, but we would have, you know, an elementary, middle school and then a high school wing you can see there. And then some common, um, pieces in the middle of it. So we had toured, I don't know, five or six different setting for sites throughout Minnesota and came up with this concept with the help of Nexus Solutions. Here's a site concept. This is west of the Malaca School District. Um, Malaca School District actually owns this partial of land where, where my cursor is. Um, and so these two sites are, this, this site is available. This one is privately owned right now. Um, but this site does come with the access of this driveway. So it's about nine acres. Um, if we went with the building concept, I think it's around five acres that we would need. So we'd have a little extra space, um, if needed. Um, some of this space needs to be used for septic and well because there is no, uh, water, um, to this, um, land. So we have to use septic and do septic and well, well. So this is just a site concept of a current, uh, plot of land that we've looked at, possibly looking at purchasing, um, down the road where we could have this build. Um, like I said, it's west of Malaca School District right now. And that would allow Princeton to continue to send students, because Princeton right now sends students to Rome River North and Rome River South and Rome River East for the high school group. So this would allow, you know, uh, Princeton to continue to send to the north facility. Tracy?
All right, so, um, with the site concept that you saw in the building, um, right now, um, the budget came in with Baird, um, at fourteen million, six hundred thousand dollars for the build. Um, that's all costs associated with it and their estimate on furnishings and, and things like that. Um, they would go through the whole process with us. Um, this is a twenty-year lease purchase agreement. So currently, you know, we're just leasing right now, um, through the lease levy. I actually entered that in, uh, in Princeton's lease levy. And this would continue that, but only for twenty years, then we would fully own it. Instead of right now, what we're doing is we're just paying it forever. Um, so this came up as a great option. Um, the new legislation that passed is allowing an additional sixty-five dollars, um, per ADM for, for cooperative or intermediate use for districts. So, um, that's what really pushed things over into the bucket of, of most districts, not having to spend any additional money on it. And I'll show you on the next slide, grid affordability of it. Um, currently about fifty-five percent of this payment is made by member districts and forty-five is non-members that use our sites. If there's openings, we let non-members use our sites because it really brings down the cost for the members, um, shared amongst more people. St. Francis, Forest Lake, Onamia, I would say are three biggest users for non-members. Um, and then member districts. So we, we take forty-five percent of all of the bills and bill that away and then, um, the rest of fifty-five percent is divvied out between the members based on their enrollment and child count. And that's how it's set up now. We've talked about, um, moving forward, looking at possibilities of charging non-members more. Um, we've been told in the past by MDE that we cannot do that and now we are being told that we can. So we are looking into that. Um, depends who you talk to sometimes and, um, who's in charge, what year. So, um, we're looking at that option. There's, there's lots of options with the lease levy as well. I'll throw that up here. So this is how it looks with the new project. Based on numbers from FY twenty-three, um, this last year wasn't complete yet when, um, Baird looked at this for us. So Princeton's bill, um, this is the estimated with the new build. Um, their, their cost would be three hundred and forty-six thousand, assuming their enrollment stays exactly the same and all of that. Um, as you can see, it shows that sixty-five dollar per APU would be used first and then a portion of the two-twelve, which is of course what we're currently using as well. Um, and then that would leave a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars remaining of that two-twelve money for Princeton. And let me know if you have any questions as I go through this too. Um, the other district information is up there as well.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
How many, uh, students per, just roughly, uh, per district do you have? Do you have from one minute? I don't see it here.
Um, we had around, well, we go by membership days, but we have around seventeen or nineteen thousand membership days. Um, Princeton had around, uh, twenty-seven students. This last year.
Um, not just at Rome River North.
Right, with, at, at setting force, at Rome River setting for sites.
Yeah.
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 Right, cute.
This chart shows that, that tax impact change. Um, so for Princeton, if you're looking at a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, the, in, the net change, so we're already obviously utilizing yearly levy dollars, um, but with this new build, it would increase eleven dollars and thirty-six cents per year for, for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Um, three-hundred-thousand-dollar home is eighteen eighty-one and that's again per year. Um, since it's able to be spread out over so many districts, um, it makes it really affordable.
So is that math? At, after that would be more than what we're currently?
What we're currently paying, this is the increase.
Per year.
Correct. Yeah, and that would be for twenty years. Um, if we don't do it, obviously, we just would still be leasing and having to figure out a lease option, um, for a, for a Rome River North site somewhere as well, so likely still go up. But, um, our, our hope is to own the building so we can.
So can, do you know off the top of your head, so the board knows how much we pay annually to the owner of the building that we currently lease in Malaca?
Um, currently it is around a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, I believe. It's our least expensive lease.
So every year, Rome River, which is us and five other districts, are, are paying a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to somebody who owns this building for us to use this building.
An old grocery store.
It's an old, it, it's, it's in bad shape. It's all, it's not a good location. I mean, and they could probably go out there and check that out if they ever wanted to.
Yeah. Anytime you want to tour any of our sites, you can just let me know and.
Yeah, there's a lot of things you can do with setting for with the students. They, they damage things, um, daily. Um, there's a lot of, uh, new technology with building materials and things like that you can do to really, to really help that situation. Um, and we've been kind of, um, somebody said, putting lipstick on a pig.
Yeah.
Um, um, not wanting to spend a whole lot of money on, on something we don't own because for, for, I, ten years probably, um, as long as I've been here, we've been talking about, well, we're probably going to do something here in the near future, so we're not going to put a million dollars into this building that we don't own.
Yeah. That special locking system, I think the quote was over six-hundred thousand dollars to put that in, that building. We just thought.
And that was a couple of years ago.
Yeah. That was a couple of years ago, um, that it was presented to us and I just couldn't justify doing that because like Tracy said, it was just not, um, it's just not a, a facility that we'd want to, you know, put that much money into.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Currently for all member districts, um, all member districts would have to approve it. Um, um, we can't have two not approve it. Um, it's, it's, um, paid, fully paid for through the lease levy for everybody except for Malaca until they finish paying off their ALC. They would be more than maxed out, um, due, due to their ALC that they built. And I can't remember, uh, Nexus or Baird said they had seven years left or something on that, so.
Yeah, because we're a joint powers, um, cooperative. Uh, Tracy is correct with saying that each board, you're not approving anything today. This is just discussion, obviously. Because there's more conversations that we'd like to have with you and we'd like to have Nexus and Baird come and present as well. Um, this is just getting it out there, just so you have an idea. This is kind of the direction that we would like to see, um, Rome River North and, and, and of course, the cooperative, um, go towards. Um, but yes, we'd have to have each board vote on it. And then it would have to, before that, it would be passed at our executive council, which is made up of all superintendents that Superintendent Barton is on. And then we have our own governing board, which Melissa Lynch is, um, a member of that. So that's my school board. And so we would pass it there and then we'd pass it on to each member district to approve at your, at a board meeting.
So I mean, this is year seven for me and I remember my first meetings back at Rome River six years ago. I mean, this, this was an issue back then and I, as I understood it, it's been an issue for ten plus years. We have a failing building that we lease and we spend a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on. It needs significant upgrades. It's in a building that it really doesn't make sense, common sense, to stick a million dollars into a, a building that's fallen down and that we don't own. Right, so I mean, that, I guess, that's just the struggle of what do we do? And I think that, that in the last couple of years, it's been more people leaning towards, well, we, we could just own our own building and it would have everything that we needed. Um, and we have this ability to do the lease levy. It would, um, you know, add, as you could see, a, a dollar or two dollars a month to our residents' taxes if we were to do that. But it would be paid and fallen twenty years. And it is something that, uh, you know, is, is, is a need. I mean, and the fact that we're part of the co-op and we're one of the six, we get first, I guess, dibs at different open spots. And you can see that people, um, transport their children from well over an hour away to get a spot that we have, um, if there's any openings.
Also, there's a number of districts would have to approve this and we're going to go down.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yep.
Would we, um, would we potentially see some savings if we could send our K through twenty-two-year-olds just to Malaca instead of sending them to, uh, Rome River East and South?
Um, some districts will based on the transportation costs. Um, but we would still need a, a high school spot in the Cambridge area.
Mm-hmm. I have plans for that in the future.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe be able to consolidate buildings.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking of maybe in the future.
And that would be a significant savings, um, because that lease is, is very expensive. Um, but, um, transportation-wise is why we thought, you know, do we, do we go with the high school there? And it was very well done as far as you don't want, uh, setting for seventeen-year-old interacting with a six-year-old, right? So they have their own locked entrances and the only shared space would be the, there's possibly a small gymnasium slash food service area, um, that would be locked as well and, and monitored, so it's specific times. But otherwise, there wouldn't be shared spaces and things like that. So it was, it was very well designed, um, to take care of that. And Rome River North is one of those places, you know, those, those kids, just because of their disability, they, they deserve to have a place to kind of be proud to go to and not just kind of get the leftover. That's kind of how it feels to the, the students and the staff.
Mm-hmm. And with it being a K through twelve building, we'd be able to, um, do what we do best, which is serve students and that's what's most important and being able to have more students attend our, our facilities. We've been doing this a long time and we do it very well. And, um, it would have the potential to bring in, um, other non-member districts, you know, to access just our, our setting for sites because we'd have more space and we'd have the ability to serve more students. So, um, this is just a brief timeline and next steps. Obviously, these dates can change depending on how the presentations go. Um, we have several other district board presentations, as you can see, outlined on those dates. Princeton, um, is our first one. Um, and then we'll see the rest of our, our member districts, um, throughout July and August. Um, our goal then is to address some questions and concerns, um, at board meetings. And that's where we're thinking of bringing Nexus Solution in and then Baird as well, Baird Financial, um, in to, to get down to more of the deeper discussion with the, the funding and the, the numbers and those types of things. Um, if we stuck to this timeline, it is a quick timeline. Um, obviously, there's no pressure and this is just, um, next steps that we're looking at. Then we would look for district approvals around October-ish, uh, begin that design, November-ish, final levy certifications. I think that is set for December. Um, have those lease proceeds, building awards, all those types of things with the hopes of, um, occupying the new building in September twenty twenty-six. Of course, if, you know, we, we have to have more conversations, more board presentations, we would do that. We could push it out to September twenty twenty-seven. So this is, you know, this is just a example timeline that we developed, so.
Yeah, so the, the intent of this was just to, to give you kind of this overview. And then, of course, there's going to be lots of different information to come. We're going to have to lean on Melissa as the board rep to, you know, continue to keep the board informed as I'm sure that their board will be getting lots of information.
Yes.
So the, the building concept here, you have the elementary wing, middle school, high school wing. Obviously, they're all separated, so there's no intermixing, but then why would we send any kids to Cambridge if we have this?
You wouldn't have to.
We wouldn't.
No. You wouldn't have to. I would say right now, Rome River South and East, the, the vast majority of the students that are attending there are from St. Francis and Forest Lake. Um, St. Francis.
Students there to begin with.
Pardon?
We have very few students there to begin with in Cambridge.
Yeah. You have, you have, yeah.
That's the only place where the high school is right now.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, Rome River East is the only high school setting or site that we have. South and North are the same, it's just different towns.
And since Princeton has about the same distance between the two, it's, um, then flexible with, oh, we have all these non-members that want to come to Cambridge. Um, Princeton can send a few more next year to the Malaca area's location instead or vice versa. If Onamia or there's an influx of kids at, at North, it's not any further. Um, but once a kid is, student is at a specific location, it's nice to keep them there.
Yeah. And so their only transition right now is if you have a student at North, your only transition is to East when they are in ninth, tenth grade, depending on when they're able to go over, over to that site. able to go over over to that site. But you're right, you Princeton could have all the students go to Rum River North. Yeah, yep.
I just had one another question. As far as the design and building, are you building to capacity now? Are you building for like future growth?
Future growth.
You are? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I'm I'm sure you probably see maybe once a year some child count numbers. Um. When I started, there was a running tally with child count going back to like the nineties, um where nine percent was like the average um amongst all members, nine percent, and we are at twenty percent now. Our member districts combined, special ed percentage of their population is twenty percent.
Which unfortunately or fortunately is not uncommon for a lot of organizations.
Date-wide, but um it's it's not going away.
And dare I say, if you build it, we'll we'll fill it. Yeah. Which is which is what is important to us, obviously, is serving students and and making sure that we can give them those skills to generalize so they can go back to their home district because that's our main goal is to have them come in, support them with those intensive services and get them back to their their home district as soon as possible so they can be there with their peers. So they're not missing birthday parties. They're not missing you know, that growth and that development of friendship and stuff like that. So we want to make sure that um we have a facility to be able to provide those um skills and that education to them.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right, we will move on to our second information item, Tiger Care.
Well, let's bring up Nicole Wiganowski, our district nurse, and she can kind of facilitate the conversation and introduce people and uh this is something I've briefed the board on uh maybe a couple of times. So I'm excited for you to hear directly from them uh about something that would be pretty awesome.
IT problem. I apologize.
If you want to email it to me quick, I can email it to uh.
That would be great.
Emily, Emily, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I'm gonna email you a presentation and we're gonna ask you to put it on the screen, please.
Okay.
And I'll just send it to you.
Okay, look for an email from Nicole.
There, I shared it with you. To you. Well, while that is coming online, um, thank you for for hearing and speak tonight. I greatly appreciate it. I'm Nicole Wiganowski. I'm the district school nurse. And I'm here tonight with an assortment of people, um representatives from various places. I have Connie She- Shehan. From the uh School-Based Health Alliance. Uh, Paul Alegra, a physician at uh Advocate Urgent Care, Jeremy Peterson, physician at M Health, Jackie Smith, nurse at the primary school. And we're here tonight to talk to you guys about something we coined by the name of Tiger Care. Um, we are hoping to go forward and discuss a school-based health clinic um in our different large sites throughout the district. And that is why we're here tonight. So like I mentioned, we've coined it coined it Tiger Care. Um, because we love to call everything Tiger, so it makes sense, right? And it's cute. Um, it would be a partnership between advocates and Princeton Public Schools to facilitate getting medical care to the students and staff um onsite during the school day. So you've probably heard the the term school-based health center thrown around before, SBHC. Um, really, more than anything, it's meant to be a safety net. In a perfect world, every child would have insurance and every parent would have time to bring them there. And there wouldn't be copays and there wouldn't be obstacles and barriers in the way. But we don't live in that world currently. And being able to keep things equitable across the board and allow students as well as staff not to miss school um to have more urgent care medical needs met is a win. Um, this will be my eighth year in clinic working in the district and Jackie the same. And nine times out of ten, it's not that parents don't want to bring their kids in for care if we recommend it. You know, we think someone has an urine infection or we need someone to get checked for strep, things like that, which this would cover. It's parents simply don't have time. They can't take time off of work. Maybe they have issues with their insurance. And a lot of times we don't see those needs getting met because they're bringing coming back into school. In order to try to curb that, the state of Minnesota and at a national level too, has done tremendous things to try to implement these into the school systems. We would like to be part of that.
Um, I'll just, yeah, I'll just add that um in Minnesota, we were the first state to have a school-based health center. So they're fifty years old. Um, we were the first ones to have one. And um it says it's evidence-based and it is really true that we when kids are healthy, they learn better. I mean, it just needs to make sense. Um, we have currently twenty-nine clinics right now. So we had a little bit of a stall. We were the first one to have a school-based clinic. And then we just kind of stalled out around twenty twenty-five. And in the last two years, we've had seventeen school-based interests and seventeen school-based health centers and almost all of them in rural areas. Um, so we're finding that we're just um that the need is huge. And um we are here as a support system. We are an umbrella organization, so we are part of the national organization. But we're here to support folks like Nicole who are interested in starting a clinic. We don't actually do any of the work. We just support you and um support you with resources and direct you toward funding and make sure that you are all on the right track with um moving in with the clinic. So they've been a great partner to work with so far.
You guys are full of resources. The nice piece is that we're not starting this from scratch. It's been done before on various states and various levels. We would, however, be the first to do it in the Northwest region. Um, so I'm sure.
Tell Emily to go move forward.
Emily, can you move it forward?
So who would be the closest to us?
So here is a map of the um current ones are in black and the ones that are up and coming are in purple. And as you can see, there is a very large gap between where we're located and the nearest one.
So the metro's got quite a few.
Yep, absolutely. Metro has quite a few. Take into consideration, though, that is Minneapolis Public that has the majority of them. The Department of Health is located in their high schools. The difference, though, is that they are located within their high schools, whereas we would have locations in all of our schools. So we would be able to actually help the children in the preschool setting and family area here at this building, as well as the staff all the way up through our high schools. I don't know, Em. What do you? Want to go back a slide?
Just a quick question. Do we currently have space?
So that is an issue, and we have found some. Um, so one of the other major differences I should point out is that when this has been done, usually they have a physician on site, and that's why they only have it in one building throughout their entire district. We are going to be utilizing telehealth. Um, you know, thanks to COVID, good or bad, um uh technology has come a very long way. Telehealth machines, when I started nursing, was like the size of this wall. I mean, it was ridiculous. And now with technology, there's a size of a Chromebook. And you can get lung sounds and oxygen levels and temperatures and things just like that. So we have figured out sites, um areas near the health office at primary and intermediate. Family Center would be located in the district nurse office itself. And high school and middle school, it's a little bit more tricky, but we have figured out a place in middle school temporarily and high school. Long-term goals, if we were to get get grant money, which there are a lot of grants available to help with this long-term, we could maybe put up some walls and and create a defined space for it to grow. But for the interim, to keep things cost-neutral, obviously, we're just trying to get it up and running.
I think you have a point.
Um, the other difference too, and I know Jason, you had mentioned you had this in a district before, but it was the hours were limited. It was at one location, the telehealth machine. And there doesn't sound like there was any staff available to help. So the health office staff will be assisting with this. Um, it it's a big undertaking. We know it's going to be a lot of work and we're going to see what it looks like when all is said and done and how much work it will be. But the nice piece is that we will help people get set up and we will do the strep tests or the urine samples or the COVID tests, which we've already done COVID tests now for quite a while. And um and that information will go to our partners at Advocate so that they can actually review all the information and see the patient and talk to them. The goal is is that, you know, a student or a staff member would either be determined that they are contagious and they must leave school at that point, or they can stay and the prescription will be waiting for them. You know, before on their on their way through town, the parent could pick up the prescription on the way potentially to get the child. It would reduce time that goes around, as well as staff. I think as it stands right now, we have double digits every day that come into the health office, whether it's staff or students. About it's about forty percent for students, if I'm honest, who really would benefit from being evaluated. And if you think of that and even a portion of those kids or staff members getting care immediately, they might not have to go home.
It's huge.
So as we talked about, um unmet needs, national evidence, obviously, there's a ton of literature and information out there. MDH has an entire website dedicated as well that I have linked in here. They're twenty-nine in the state. We would like to be thirty. Uh, Emily, can you go forward? Goals for the district. Uh, easy, affordable care, refer students and staff to long-term healthcare solutions. So this is where our partnership with Fairview already comes into play around health. You know, um, we don't have an urgent care set up here with unhealth. We've got the emergency room and we've got the the standing, you know, long-term care pieces or, you know, the family care pieces. And this is a good medium to get care where there's care needed. And then potentially refer off at that point to more community-based things as well. We have class wing counseling, you know, we have um other counseling here. We've got the emergency room. So we have the community resources that we potentially would refer off at that point. School nurses have been doing this forever. We just haven't had the the backing necessarily to do some of these more intricate pieces. Um, I talked about exclusion criteria. This is huge. We're not living in the COVID times, but if you remember to isolation and all of that fun stuff, um, you know, you might have it, you might not, but you gotta go home just in case. That stands with strep as it stands right now in any type of respiratory illness. It would really be nice to know right then and there if a child has something or a staff has something or not. In theory, it would cut down on spreading that. Um, reduce the amount of subs needed to fill staff roles. If we could take a staff member out for fifteen minutes to be seen and cleared versus having to have them go home for the day to get an appointment with a doctor. And obviously, I mentioned the cost-neutral part. And I saw this little quote at the bottom, and I just thought it was good because you know, having access to an SBHC means that your school considers the physical, social, and emotional wellness of its students. And we do. Our community always has. And so now that times are changing and and we have the opportunity, it makes sense to go forward with it. Uh, Emily? Next slide, please. So how will this work? Well, obviously, I'm not a doctor and I'm not writing prescriptions for anybody. Um, we have a partnership. Like I said, and we already have a partnership with unhealth for the long-term stuff. Now we have one potentially with advocates to do the short-term stuff using telehealth. And Jackie could probably speak more to the actual nitty-gritty of how it will work, but in essence, it's kind of how it already works. Students or staff come in, they complain of a symptom. We already do our assessments. Um, instead of doing just a manual blood pressure check now that we have a fancy machine that actually sends results to a physician, we'll be on the video itself to address the issues. The other nice thing about this is parents will also be able to be on that call.
Oh, okay.
So we would like to get the permission slips and stuff solidified um before the school year, just to so parents will sign things and what have you. But parents will have the option of a link being sent to them and they can sit in on that video um call themselves. And so they can watch their child and have that discussion with the physician. You know, we want parents to be part of it, obviously. And I know I would want, like my older kids, maybe not so much, but my little ones, I would want to be there for it. So this is wonderful because then they don't have to be work and they can be part of it. Um, so we're still working out some of the nitty-gritty, but the gist is that once the health office has determined that there is a need and this is something that can be addressed via urgent care, obviously, you know, no bones broken in half or anything like that, that would be straight to the emergency room. Um, we would call up urgent care and kind of get fast-tracked into their queue. And the goal would be within about twenty minutes or less um person would be seen. And then if there's additional things that are needed, um lab work, we're not doing blood lab work, but like I said, the like the the swabs for COVID, for RSV, for strep, um a simple urine, you know, and bacterial infection test. Those are things that we can use a dipstick for and things like that. And the advocate would be providing all of that equipment. So we'd be able to give those results to the physician. And then we know one or the other. Next slide, please. The other thing I wanted to mention, and thanks to the Alliance for kind of creating an assessment packet that we've kind of went through, um we had a planning and an advisory committee already put together. Uh, Melissa Lynch was kind enough to sit on it. We more than welcome anybody else who would like to as well. We have a member from the chamber. Uh, we have some of the different health office staff sitting on it as well as the physicians. So the goal, oh, and a student representative as well. So the goal is to really hone in on how to plan it correctly. And then once it's up and running, kind of readjust and pivot based on the student needs and the staff needs. We might find out there's something else that you know, we we need to adjust for. I mean, that's why having an ongoing advisory committee would be a good plan.
Because the last thing you want is to put get the school-based health center up and running and then a year later say it's not sustainable. And by having an advisory committee, keeping your finger on the pulse, finding out what are the needs of the community, what are the needs of the school, what are the needs of the nursing staff, you can make sure that you can ensure that as you can go forward, that it won't be just um flying, let's find the night, have it once and then goes away. It's just that's that's the last thing that we want. We want it to be sustainable and to be used continuously.
I agree. Yeah, this this isn't just a pilot program. We want to see this implemented and to stay. So that is.
I'd imagine it would it will take a little while to get it kind of up up and running. I mean, I would think a lot of it's going to be just parents knowledge of it and the communications that we're going to have and then the word of mouth. You know, let's every time a parent has a good positive experience and then they tell five other parents, you know, that could really uh pick off, but it's gonna, you know, it'd be, in my opinion, you wouldn't want to make any judgment on it after one year.
No.
You'd go on to it for the long haul.
And it needs some time. And and I I really feel that one of its strengths is that, you know, we're already calling families of students to say that, you know, their child is ill and this is what we're seeing. And a lot of times parents are like, well, can you just you know, give them ibuprofen or can you, you know, can you tell me what you think's wrong and things like that? And this would be an area of growth where we can say like, we can offer that. Um, having the health office kind of the push behind it to say it is available. Because, you know, I get a lot of reminders too at the beginning of the school year. I can't tell you or remember everyone that comes through. But in the moment, when you need it, that's when you're going to pay attention and and be happy that it exists. So hopefully we'll we'll get some traction on it. Emily, next slide. Please. And then this is very tiny, but it's kind of just an overview of what our current health offices sit like and um kind of the plan as to how this would go forward. And I can obviously send you a copy that is much larger at any time. But it kind of shows two different paths. And, you know, one path would just be the standard. You're coming to the health office and we're taking care of you like we always were. Um, the other option would be that it gets a little more invasive and we're you know, referring to an urgent care part onsite or we're referring to long-term or maybe a little bit of both. And so it won't change our practice in what we already do, but it has the potential to make it better. Next slide, please. And this is just more information that I'd be happy to send you the links for if you need them. But more importantly, do you guys have any questions or do you guys have anything you'd like to say?
Uh, one of the slides there, you said the funding is through grants and revenue. Can you can you give me an example of what that revenue would be?
Well, um, so there is some revenue to be had on the school end, but that has more to do with um billing through Medicaid. So we're not looking at that component right now. This would be more. This would be more the potential of like advocate being able to charge for the visits they do have for people who have insurance and having that revenue come back to them. There are safeguards in place, so the revenue, revenue that is generated is handled by the committee. And, you know, like it's a group of people that determine like if it goes back into putting up walls or getting new equipment or things like that for it. The purpose of this isn't to, you know, become rich quick. It's not the intention at all. Most of these, if I'm honest. You know, survive purely on grants and grants alone. So there are those available and we will pursue those as well to try to recoup some costs for the um equipment and things that advocate's going to purchase for us. But ultimately, the goal is that they would be able to generate enough revenue with the visits that they're seeing. To pay for the equipment and to stay lodged in our sites. And it will also make up for maybe some of the workload that the nurses are taking on in the different health offices too.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't, you know, we wouldn't look at this as like any kind of a revenue generator. It would, I guess my. Expectation is that it would be a cost-neutral piece that we'd be able to provide a significant service to our families. Well, for them to have more access to healthcare and then we would rely heavily on our partner at the clinic. To take care of, you know, all about the medical, you know, kinds of things. And they'd be the one that would be. Working with the family on the insurance and, and those kinds of things. We would, uh, you know, we would provide some in-kind space for them. Um and then the other piece that we would really have to keep an eye on is how much of our own nurses' time. Is utilized uh as a provider for advocate. Um so that's just, that would be the one thing that I would have a concern over that we would just be keeping an eye on. But I think it'd be a good time to hear from the doctor.
Nice to meet you. Nice, Paul Allegra, I'm an emergency physician. I've, I was formerly with leadership with Lina and been a part of a lot, lot of fun things over the years. Um trained in, in a lot of trauma programs and so forth and enjoy taking care of lower acuity these days. Um and we opened the clinic in Zimraun there and previously in Malacca. And um we've had a lot of success, a certain region, a lot of um positive feedback, I like to think. Trying to do our best, we don't knock it out of the park with everything, but um we really try to as often as we can espouse a good culture uh care for the community. Uh you got a great team up here. Uh I've known, known a lot, a lot of folks here for a long time. Uh everybody, everyone here is really mission-oriented. You know, our goal is to take care of patients. Running this to get rich, you know, we help, we put in our medical school applications. Take care of folks and that's really my goal and it's really, really fun. I still work with, do consulting with uh Fairview, Alina, Headupin. Um was that more the other day? A lot of good relationships out of state and the president-elect for. Uh all eight hundred emergency physicians in the state. Um and uh very plugged in. We have real issues with access to um healthcare these days. Our population's gone way up. And the capacity of, of our system is not kept stride with that. And there's a lot of reasons for that and whatever we can do to increase capacity in the system is really what I'm about. Uh geography should not determine the care you get, but too often it does. And being able to bring capacity and capability to regions that don't have it is really the goal. So Nicole and Jack, you have worked with. In the past, you know, came to me, I said, you know, let's give this a go. I think this project really dovetails well with urgent care operations. The bulk of our patients are between eight and ten and then the evenings and we sort of lighter duty during school hours. So I think our teams can do that. The telehealth apparatuses are able to, you know, I was, I, I went into um. Zoomed into Honduras with the same, the same product a couple of years ago. We used to think telehealth was really gimmicky. And you can listen to the lungs better than, you know, from thousands of miles away with these apparatus, better than you can at the bedside. Uh you can see in the mouth, see in the ears. I did couple that with the new testing uh platforms we have where we can do nucleic acid test strep. So we used to have to do an engine test and follow the culture two days later. Now it's all-in-one nucleic acid on-the-spot, point of care, definitive answer. You don't have to do downstream work to tell the one or not they. Need antibiotic and so forth. So to be able to have that flu, RSV, uh COVID, strep, uh bring in uh your analysis. Um we will, I think we should bring in pregnancy tests just for things like Accutane and, and so, maybe, maybe not. I don't want to get into. I think there's a couple of different versions of this. I want to, I want to go for low-line fruit um and, and do things like strep. Uh mental health may be something downstream, but I think, uh, and I think it's doable. We got to learn to walk before we can run. Um I don't want to get into uh involved with reproductive health and, and things that are potentially political and so forth. I just want to do the basic things well with your approval. Uh there's, I mean. I work, when I work at the big systems, there's, there's eighteen layers of suits above me. And with, with what we're doing here with, with advocate, it's, it's, it's a small group of people making decisions. You have a phone number, she calls anytime. There's something that, that we can do better. Um I think we can do this really well. Um I, you know, as I said, my, my, if. Something's worth doing, so we're doing well and we're figuring out the exact timing about when we start this because we really want to knock it out of the park and have a good. Uh make, make, have to provide great care and be a good look for the community and so forth. Um. I see Jeremy looking as Wapki talking too long. Do you guys have any questions? You know, uh any, any questions for me? I mean, we'll be very responsive. I mean, if there's something you're not, you're not, you have questions about, I'll take a phone call anytime of the day. Uh we want, we want to knock it out of the park and I think we can do a number of things. We could reduce truancy, maybe reduce the, the workload on, on the nurses. Uh by reducing sort of the backlog of children in the, in the nurse's office. If this is, really takes off, if we have to have, share staff or put staff into schools, by all means, uh I'd be happy to do that. My hope is it'll pencil out. I'm not going to send anybody to collections like the payment piece or anything. Uh you know, we, we, our goal is to take care of patients. And if we can be cost-neutral and make a little money and, and provide for more jobs in the community with this, that'd be great. Um you know, at the end of my days, it's not how much money you make, it's uh, you know, if you enjoy what you do uh in life, you, you, you never work a day in your life. And that's kind of the way, uh I feel blessed to do the job we have, we do in healthcare.
So we haven't uh seen each other for a little bit, maybe a month or so. Um is it? Is this something that's, that is uh doable this fall?
I think it's doable this fall, whether, uh, I think it's doable this fall.
It all hinges on getting the equipment. I mean, that's in his hands right now.
Because I mean, if you, there's different ways to look at things, right? But I mean. You can look at this as, oh, this is so, it's so complex, but you can also look at it as, you know, it really doesn't have to be. It could be a simple piece. We get the, we get the machines, we find a spot for them. We really work hard to communicate out to, to families and what, and that to me will be a big piece. Is that communication and we're going to have to do more than just the written communication. Um you know, we might need to create a couple of video spots or just some, some promotional kinds of tools so that people know. Um you know, and, and then it's going to take a while. I would imagine if someone gets, jumps on it right away, they can, you know, fill out the paperwork ahead of time. So they're just prepared. I'd say probably more often than not, their nurse is going to call them up and say. You know, we have this option. They'll say, well, tell me more about it. Even though we may have sent out fifty things ahead of time, that might be the first time they're hearing about it. So then, you know, then there's some of the, I would imagine red tape, they got to go through, fill out paperwork, insurance. And that's all on you then, you know, your folks will.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a significant amount of compliance and regulatory in healthcare and you've got to crush your T's and dot your I's. And uh you know, the, the regulatory boards and so forth and, and that's what we're doing, getting our consent forms. Uh and you know, Connie and her team, Charlotte, I mean, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. This is being done nationally and Connie is the resource. And so we're constantly looking to Connie and Charlotte for guidance. Uh I was a DC at a conference about this last, two weeks ago and sat down and talked to Charlotte for quite a long time about. What she's seeing, what we can do better, how we can get this right. Um and, and get it off to a good footing. And to your point, uh the testing uh platforms, we have those, we're uh finalizing the telehealth platforms. And we have, it seems like we have space and then wifi and I think this is a go. And, and there's a big communication piece naturally.
Well, I would say that um if we're going to do this, probably in the next couple of weeks. We're, I mean, we're going to get more aggressive in terms of how we're moving things along. Because our first, my first communications out to families to kick off the new year. I think is slated for that maybe beginning of the second week of August. So somewhere around like August tenth or something, August seventh through the tenth, I don't know what that date is. But I mean, I would want to have stuff in my first communications from the superintendent out to families. And then we would be hitting them every week, you know, in different ways so that they would have that information. You know, of course, I'm, I'm, the one night that the Union Times isn't here, you know, this would be a perfect thing for them to run up. Uh an article on too, you know, so it's something that. That I think we just need to go for it. Um and I, unless, unless the board has some huge, if the board gives me feedback, this is something you'd like to keep them, you know. Pump the brakes on, I'll certainly, you know, yield to some of your thoughts there. Um but I mean, here's where I said is, we're an organization of student learn. But there's certain prerequisites that need to be there for students to learn, right? We talk about students need to feel safe, respected, like they belong. Well. Before all of that comes their help. Right? It's going to be hard for them to learn if they're not healthy. Here's an opportunity for us to provide health. And I think the thing that I love. As a, as a leader, is I challenge all of, every single department head to try and, you know, be the best department that they possibly can. And be innovative and kind of push themselves to do great things. And here's an awesome example of our health department. Um you know, taking that leadership role to try and push up that department into providing some of the best practices there are in schools. And that's really cool and exciting. I'd like to give it, give it a go. And I guess worst, worst thing that happens, it doesn't work and then you pull the machines out and hopefully you don't take too big of a loss on the machines.
I, I, I have a good feeling about it. I'm optimistic, sir.
And Dr. Peterson is with us, any thoughts or? We, we lean on uh Dr. Peterson's on all of our medical thoughts and.
Yeah, so. Nicole has involved me from step one because her biggest concern with all of this was to, number one, not. Uh wreck the good thing that we've had going since last year's of. Um official formation of the unhealth Fairview Princeton School District. Um relationship with the uh, uh district advisor role that I serve in. And which I a hundred percent appreciate that because this has been a, a ten-year project in the making. Um and this is a really great opportunity to take a organization that is built on urgent care. That that's their focus, that's their mission and they're very nimble and they're small. Um versus a larger organization like unhealth Fairview where we're the, the largest healthcare organization in the state. And we just don't have the ability to be that nimble. And to be able to dedicate uh time and re, and, and uh budgetary resources into something that. Does have the potential to maybe not work out. Um and so with Dr. Allegra being able to um take a chance on this and say, hey, I'm willing to do the work, I'm willing to partner with other people. Um uh on the advisory board to make this happen. Um it's a really awesome opportunity to be part of that. So um yeah, it's. And, and having one more person, they kind of make sure that we're all kind of um checking the boxes and making sure that this is going to continue to be in the student's best interest. Um is definitely a good thing. So yeah, no, it's definitely uh, it, it's definitely got my support behind it.
Awesome, thank you.
So we're, we are ready and going to push forward with this in the hope to get it up and running for fall if. The, you know, board and everyone agrees that it is something that, you know, we have your approval for. That's where we're at.
Any other questions?
Someone will just go on the agenda to review and prove, I guess, because it's just information today, right?
Yeah, I guess I, I wasn't necessarily um thinking that the board needed to formally approve this unless, unless you felt differently. I mean, it's, it's a, it's something that I want you to be aware of, but. Um doesn't hurt to have you approve it. I mean, I don't believe that there's going to be any dollars, uh district dollars spent on this. Um that's the hope.
The hope.
That's the hope. Um that's the hope. The uh. Yeah, I mean, if we had it on the first agenda uh for August. I think that would give us plenty of time and it doesn't ever hurt to have the board approve things.
It would be, if, if we could, it'd be nice to see, you know, like what that, because that sounds like grants will be helping become, right? Be nice to see what that does for other areas. You were saying there's other um area that the grants come into play with it as well.
I don't, I don't believe that there's any grant that we're going to have to start off. Other than advocates startup money to.
Get the equipment.
To put the equipment in and kind of help launch this in terms of the planning. Of it and then we would, of course, do the communications out with the families and then our staff as well to let them know that this would be an option.
Yeah, the grants would be kind of after the fact. Um we, the. The main grant that MDH was offering was over, I believe, as of last December and they are reopening it back up. But not until closer to this December. So we can't even apply for that yet. But um the state has put a significant weight behind pushing um the SBHC. And Connie can probably speak to that more, but.
Yeah.
Um there, there is stuff available out there. It won't help us in the interim to get it started, but you know, to potentially grow it. There is something there.
So there is about um about five million dollars that will be in the next wave of grants, um that begin in five billion. So um we know that we have a very, very strong position to be able to get it, so.
Yeah, so in terms of, we don't have any startup money for this. I mean, we would have the, the location and that would be in-kind kind of donation, if you will. And then we would have our nurses be available. I think that would be the thing that I would keep my closest eye on. Is how much of our nurses' time is spent on providing service and care to assist uh advocate. But they're also assisting their own students. So it's something that we just will need to figure out like what's the good sweet spot because I've, you know, I. I, we're not interested in paying the salaries of nurses for another organization. Um but it's just a matter of, you know, what does that look like? And that has yet to be determined or, or negotiated. I think that it's almost too early for us to tell how much of an impact that will have on our nurses' staff. Uh one way or the other. Uh because that's something that we've, we've constantly been trying to find the right recipe of the number of nursing, nursing staff we have. To our student body, especially with the increased acuity of some of the needs of our students. Um so I mean, that would be something that we'll just have to keep our eye on. Then in terms of like. You know, who's going to pay for the, the doctors and, you know, advocates' time and their medical care, it, you know, that's insurance. I mean, it's just like when you go to your own clinic. This has a lot of similarities to like what we've been doing for decades and most schools do. Where we will provide in-kind space for maybe therapeutic services, maybe a, a therapist. Or, you know, or school-based mental health kinds of things where we have different providers, private providers. That are around the region that um we will provide them a space so that they can see clients within the school day. So it just takes a student out of class for a half an hour to receive their services versus having to miss a full day of school to go. Drive to whatever location that would be. And we've been doing that for, you know, many years. And uh, you know, again, they, these, those providers, the school-based mental health providers, for the most part, they will bill. Um insurance to be paid. So I mean, there, there's some similarities with that as well.
Any more questions from anybody?
I would like it put on the agenda. I think just based on, I think that's just good protocol.
Yeah.
And I would like to see this, can you send us this presentation so we can look at the links?
Sure.
Alright.
Um if you would be so kind, Nicole, is to reach out to me tomorrow maybe and then we can kind of talk about next steps.
Okay. Sounds good.
Alright, very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming here.
Move on to our last information item is the first reading of some policy. Um we don't have Don here. I'm Melissa, who else am I calling?
Yeah, I'm on there. Yeah.
It didn't look like there was a whole lot of.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Shattering stuff. Anybody have any questions on those first readings? Otherwise we'll see them.
Yeah, we just went through these at our last meeting, the other.
We'll put them in like two weeks, four, three weeks.
Okay. Alright, we will move on then to our first action, action item, twenty-four, twenty-five. Long-term facility maintenance revised budget.
Okay, so the first document is Fund One and that is actually the budget that uh we are revising. This is, I mentioned when we did the original that we would have um a revised. um, a revised one, uh, when we did the ten-year plan, which was in the month of July here. The updates, um, to it are, um, I believe we have the lunchroom and adjoining hallways uh, and flooring in the intermediate school and the prior one, I think it was only at seventy-five thousand, though it's now at a hundred as we get updated core. Um, that would not be until next summer, so would most likely, um, be a third and two-thirds, you know, the split between the years, so be aware of that. Sidewalk maintenance, um, they put in, uh, new double doors by the gym and the sidewalk, the yeah, they're not meeting correctly, so we gotta do some sidewalk work to make that, um, work correctly and that's about twenty thousand dollars. Um, as you know, we got the middle school roof in the future. Um, the high school is, um, we will, in the next the next item on the agenda will be the ventilation project that we talked about this spring. Um, this two hundred thousand is to get the initial upfront stuff done, all of the planning, the engineering, the all that that goes into, you know, they call it soft costs. All of that will actually be reimbursed, so we're just cash flowing this for the moment. Um, and then, uh, in the pool chemical room, the HRV system, that was on actually last, our revised budget for twenty-four. Uh, it did not get completed by the end of the year because of various reasons. And so we have moved that into, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five. And then if you go down to the family center, our new buildings and grounds, uh, director, Julian Olencamp came in, uh, the first week of July and said, Michelle, hate to tell you this, but we, we need some boiler tubes in our family center boiler. Um, so that's fourteen thousand dollars. So, you know, it'll be like our previous person, every time they come in, something's broke. And they're not cheap things that are broke. Um, so I'm asking for approval for, uh, the change in the revised on one budget, but I did list the bond projects just to go through them. Um, we don't have to change the budget because it's just in Fund Six is an estimate. We are actually approving projects. We go by projects, the state goes by numbers, it's just crazy. Um, as the abatement bond, uh, that we have out in the east, uh, high school lot was started today. Um, and that should be completed in about four to five weeks, so it should be completed in plenty of time for, uh, the start of school. It's actually gonna be a little cheaper than the five hundred and fifty thousand. The middle school, uh, the front parking lot, that will be next summer and, uh, this fall, we will be working on, um, those front page documents that, and, uh, traffic flow through there as, um, we look at, uh, updating the asphalt in that parking lot. Uh, we shouldn't have to do the underneath thing at the middle school where we're replacing the infrastructure underneath. We're more looking at the surfacing like the east high school, but also traffic full. Um, the LTFM projects that were approved before, you can see anything listed in green is complete. Um, the high school roof is getting closer to being complete. And, uh, the buildings and grounds roof was part of that whole bid that is completed. They completed that last year. Um, as far as what's going on for twenty-four, twenty-five for the, this summer, we got the HVAC controls. Phase three will be going on. We've got that started. The tuck pointing is in process on all the buildings. A couple of them were done as of June thirtieth and the rest they moved on to. So, as you see, we have the flooring for the high school entrance. We've got that in yellow and a hole because of the whole, um, committee thing and determining what we're going to do, if anything, with the high school with a, um, vote for bond. And then everything listed in pink is, um, for next summer, which is the flooring at the intermediate school gym, the folding gym wall, um. We've got a flooring at the IS, lots of flooring. And IS gym, acoustical panels and are being painted and the plumbing pieces have been worked on already, actually. So that piece is in process and we're looking at the fiber cable, um, we were gonna do that this summer, but unfortunately that our E-rate, um, application was denied. We are going to resubmit that application and hopefully that will be accepted, uh, so that, um, we have a smaller portion of that hundred and fifteen thousand to pay ourselves.
Is that a project we can only do like over the summer or is that?
Um, most likely because it goes, they actually will feed those, um, wires and tubing under, uh, the current asphalt. Actually, it's crazily in there right now. It's just laying in the ground. They didn't put it in any protective sleeve. And it doesn't
Not fiber right now either. I said, and it's not fiber right now either. They're gonna put fiber according to here.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they put in there initially to get our internet and stuff to run, but that needs to be replaced and protected and put in, in a way that it comes into the building without zigzagging through. So. E-rate should pay for, um, should pay for it. Uh, we just had some application pieces that needed to be, um, corrected and, um, ethnic will be helping Jason Webb with that, so. I have confidence that it will go through. Any questions?
All right. Do you have a question? Um, if there's no questions, is there a motion to accept the revised twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five long-term facility maintenance budget as presented? Motion's been made by Chad, seconded by Sue. Um, any comments or questions before we vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All right, revised budget is approved. Ventilation project.
All right, attached, you will see that we have, uh, twenty-four A resolution. We are actually going to be taking out um, a small bond to do the ventilation project. It will be three years. And, um, I'll talk about the costs and then this bond is for, um, one million something, one million three.
Too small.
Yeah, it's not too small. One million, three oh five. Um, that includes the cost of the project, soft costs, and it includes, uh, the issuance fees and the work um, from elders and all the attorneys that have to work on this. Bond process, um, in order for us to do it, um. So if you, ICS put together a narrative for the project and that pro- that has to go with, um, the ten-year plan, this all has to go with the ten-year plan in order for us to do it. So he had, Ryan and ICS created the narrative. And, uh, we will be sending that along. And then the very last thing is the debt schedule. And this debt schedule is actually what will end up to be levy, then as you can see. The total cost with interest is like one point five million. But it's a three-year bond. It's not a loan bond. It's enough to do the project, um, over the three years and, um, move on. This bond actually, uh, the money goes from, um, Fund One into actually, um, Fund Seven, so our state aid will help offset some of it agenda, or it affects our state aid and how that works. Then, um, on the Oh, I guess these are separate with, we have to hold on the ventilation project before we can go to the ten-year plan.
Okay.
I'm going to accept a resolution, tenth inch. Insurance of facility maintenance bond to the high school ventilation project as presented.
All right, motion been made by Eric. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Chad, um, any comments or questions from Michelle on that project?
Must be like number ten ventilation project for the high school. I don't know how many.
Over and over and over again.
Comments area in any of them. Cause there, there is no, uh, there's no, uh, dehumidification in that area at all.
And this is for
Connecting A to B to C to D
Yeah.
To F over all of the years. It's just so ridiculous. And they run so efficiently. And then now still you span and when this is all done, it'll be all the same.
All right.
Are we being voted?
We are going to vote by a roll call because it's a resolution. So Eric.
Yes.
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 All right. Resolution passes. Now we go to the ten-year plan.
Which is gonna show us, if you bring up the revenue spreadsheet, which, um, is very hard to read. The very first thing you see on that, um, is you see three boxes highlighted. Those are bond payments. So that's showing on the revenue sheet, uh, the way that the state would like that. And if, and the other place that I want you to go down, so you realize, go to where it says, do you see the little boxes where it says four forty-one, four forty-two, four forty-three, for those?
What line number?
Try fifty-six, thirty-sixty-two.
Yeah. No, what, what number did you say?
Fifty-six through sixty-two.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so in, um, the current year, we will have levy aid split. When you go to, um, and our, our revenue will be adjusted in the revised because, um, it will come down to this four seventy-seven in total. You will see in twenty-five, twenty-six, it's gonna go to four forty-eight and four thirty-five. That is, we will only be collecting levy there, um, because our bonds, the LTFM bond and this bond will work with our aid and it takes the aid, but in total, um, we won't start going back up until three years from now. When the next, when the very first LTFM bond goes up. So, um, all we will have is what's in fund balance and, uh, just enough to do our requireds for the year, for a few years. And then we will be selling another bond to do big projects. So it's one of the reasons why you don't wanna run your LTFM down to zero. So that's what I wanted to point out with the revenue. And with the expenditures, the second one. You will see, um, since the ventilation project is above the line, you will see in category two, so it's after the first health and safety numbers for ten years. And then there's where it says, there's only two numbers and basically zeros. That is our ventilation project. Um, and this will, I actually have to enter it into another area on the website for us to get it above the line. Um, but as far as bonding, as far as the levy goes, it is the, what's on the debt schedule for those three years. So it's broken out. Um, but that's, um, how we get the approval for above the line, the student's process.
Did you say two years or three? I see two, the twenty-five and twenty-six.
Um, the bond is for three years, the project will be over two summers.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
And I'm gonna be honest with how long all these projects seem to take to close out. It may take three years, but we just split because June is a third and July and August is two-thirds of the summer and that's typically how they do it to get we're always rebalancing for the years. It's a constant battle. And then, um, you know, then, as you know, ICS did our ten-year plan. We're pretty nailed down into twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six and even pretty good. You know, probably twenty-seven because we know we're going to be doing the roof in the next couple of years. At the middle school is gonna have to be addressed. We know we're gonna have to, we'll get some boiler stuff. But basically the old years, we're just moving those numbers down, you know? We are looking at doing, redoing the ten-year plan this spring. Uh, since Jason Olencamp is new, um, having him go through the buildings with ICS and, um, update that, so then our ten-year numbers will be more in line, but I think Eric Stramberg made the comment that as soon as we write it down, it's you know, something that
Something else happens.
Something else happens. So you will see that, um, in Fund One where we run the, um, our regular LTFM and watching the fund balance by the time we get to where we have one point five million for the roof. Uh, we're in that negative, um, area and that's where we're gonna be looking at doing the bond. The other bond will be falling off, so we will be be replacing it with another bond to do a larger project. Uh, so we'll have bonds going every three to four years. That's how our cycle will be. And then if you see Fund Six, uh, in the next three years, of course, I have to tie that out to zero. And, uh, it does come out to zero and it's based on the projects that we talked about. And you have approved. So that's our ten-year plan. As required to be the state, um, by July thirty-first, so it'll be there in plenty of time because we'll do that this week.
All right, is there any questions from Michelle on that plan? Um, if not, would somebody like to make a motion to accept the long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan? Resolution as presented.
I'm moved.
Motion's been made by Sue, seconded by Chad. Um, do we need to do a roll call? Um, we'll do a roll call then, starting with Sue.
Yes.
Chad. Deb is yes, Eric?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Ten-year plan is off and running to be changed again. All right, item ten B, lease agreement.
Um, I believe this is, uh, referring to the lease that we are currently negotiating with the city regarding Mark Park. And, uh, for us to be able to potentially lease levy for our payment, uh, to utilize Mark Park, we need to actually have a formal lease with them. And we are in the middle stages of negotiating that with them. And Michelle and I have a draft of a document that we're going to present to them on Thursday and, uh, discuss, you know, what our vision is for, uh, potential improvements of the facility. Um, but we needed to have this on the agenda for you to formally give us the authority to negotiate a lease with them to bring back to you so that we would meet our deadlines to potentially lease levy, uh, once we do that, truth and taxation later. Uh, once we do that, truth and taxation later in the year.
Right. Any questions on that? So this is gonna come back again.
Right, right.
This is just giving them the.
And I think, and because it's uh, in the. Action piece, we need to have you actually approve it.
Yeah.
To allow us to do that, but it's important for you to know that we have already paid them money every year. We just don't have a formal agreement. They just send us a bill and it's probably based upon conversations that. Were between the city and the, and the uh, district far before I was here and even Michelle.
I move to give administration the authority to negotiate it with the city or based on sound, based on sound of field.
Sorry.
Okay, motion named by Sue, seconded by Eric. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, negotiate away. Um, second reading of policies. Somebody like to make a motion to. Accept the second reading of the policies as presented, so.
Sorry.
Motion's been made by Chad, seconded by Eric. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, policies are approved, activities fees.
Uh, we've briefed the board, um. You know, where we're at with that is something that we think that we need to look at on a somewhat regular basis versus waiting a long time and then having a huge increase. Um, earlier this year, I sent the board comps of other Mississippi aid. Um, schools, we met and discussed this at our activities during committee, we've talked at finance committee. And we are recommending that the board adopts a new fee structure where we increase the high school. Uh, only by twenty-five dollars and not uh, do anything with the middle school. Uh, you'll also see that we would be phasing out or we would phase out the um, lesser amount. For the second and third sport like we've had in the past. Um, we're, I think we're the only district that we could find that did that and that's uh, causes lots of challenges for our offices. And they've asked us to take that out. So that's what uh, we're recommending to the board for you to consider.
All right, any comments, questions?
I think the motion except the revision to, but multi-five nine nine is presented.
All right, motion been made by Chad. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Um, any comments or questions before we vote? Um, hearing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right, we have four at-wheel contracts, I believe.
Yep, um, these are at-wheel employees, the uh. Since I'd come here, we tried to align those to uh, other contracts that are similar job duties. And so when we negotiate or when we work through the contracts with them, then we align those to the previous settlements that we've worked on. Uh, with our other larger units. Uh, we did make a slight change with one of them, um. Based on the market where we're at with our technicians, and so they had a slight increase uh, to theirs to match where we're at. Uh, with the local uh, market that we have here, and so uh. I would recommend that we approve those contracts and move forward.
Okay, any questions on those for Jason? Is there a motion to accept, uh, I mean, four twenty-six at-wheel contracts as presented? Motion's been made by Sue. Is there a second? Second by Chad. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, those contracts are approved. We have no additions to the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? First second and. Everybody agrees.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.